If you're interested in acquiring members.
Two marijuana dispensaries.
Okay, so that will be during the public remarks part.
And then these are for the fetal or rezoning public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Ready? Okay, we've got everybody here and I know we have a full agenda, so let's call the meeting of the Meridian Township Planning Commission Regular Meeting of June 10th, 2024 to order. Take the role of the Board, Commissioner Blumer.
President.
Commissioner Brooks.
President.
Commissioner Scales.
President.
Commissioner Snyder. President, Commissioner McConnell.
Good morning.
And Commissioner Shrewsbury is here. And I'm going to take a very quick point of privilege to say that our Commissioner McCurtis is no longer Commissioner McCurtis because now he's Trustee McCurtis and he's here briefly, so I'll give him congratulations on your appointment to the Township Board to fill the vacancy and thank you for your service on the Planning Commission. We'll be formally recognizing you at our next meeting with a resolution act surprised. But you said that you might want to just say a quick word and I'm going to point of privilege allow you to do that here during the very start of our public remarks.
Thank you, Chair Shrewsbury and fellow commissioners. I just wanted to say thank you all for, you know, working with me and it's been an honor and a privilege to work beside each and every one of you. I've learned a lot in my year and a half as a commissioner, so I wanted to publicly thank you for that. And again, it's been an honor and privilege serving next to you in our township as well and residents here, so thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. And if you're able to join us at our next meeting, we will like to formally thank you also.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. And now we are at the public remarks section of our agenda. And again, as Mr. Shorkey mentioned, this is the time to speak on anything that is on the agenda that you'd like to speak to that is not part of a public hearing. So if you have not yet turned in a green sheet and would like to, this is the time. I have a sheet from Roger Taylor. Did you want to speak now or did you want to speak at one of the public hearing times?
It's fine, I can speak now.
Okay, is it on one of the public hearing topics?
It's on marijuana dispensaries.
This will be the time to do that then.
Okay.
Yep, if you'd come to the podium and give your name and address, please.
I have one more for that, thank you. My name is Roger Taylor, 6089 East Leg Drive. I don't know how many dispensaries we have in Meridian Township, but I guess my question to you is, how many do we need? So I've been seeing at least three or four, but that's my question to you as a resident. How many do we need? That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, Mr. Taylor. Thank you, good for you. And I neglected to say that when you are speaking, you have three minutes. There's a countdown clock that will count down your time and you'll see it start to turn yellow and then red if you approach that time limit. Thank you very much, Mr. Taylor. Next up to speak is Deborah Dantis. And if I mispronounce your name, please feel free to correct me.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Deborah Dantis. I live on 3590 Brusse Point Drive in Okemos, a couple of miles away from where you are going to need to make the decision if you allow for the dispensaries to go in. I spoke in your previous meeting as a clinical social worker as well and seeing the effects of what this cannabis dose to our youth. And so I talked about that. Hopefully you have been, you all had time to read about it. Today, you know, one of the things that I talk to my patients or my clients is the way in which we take the time to make decisions, making the right, making decisions for something positive. It's really easy. Very rarely we consider, but hey, everyone can live with those consequences. There are positive and negative consequences to our decisions. Anyone can live with the positive consequences. And I want to believe and I would like to invite all of you to really consider the negative consequences of this decision. Because if one child, if one adolescent, if one adult takes their life, we're dealing with people that need these substances. They are not in the right mind. They are not thinking correctly. They don't have the time. It's a split second when we make one or the other decision. So I really want to invite you to consider the negative consequences of this decision because not everyone can live with it. And if something happens, you're going to have to think, oh, my goodness, I made, I helped make this. So I invite you to please, with yourselves, think about the negative consequences of what the decision that you have in front of you. And I thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you very much. I don't know why this isn't working. Okay. You want me to try? It looks like it has programs. Oh, okay. So just start, thanks. That should work. Next up, we have Clara Regal. And again, if I've mispronounced your name, please feel free to correct me. And if anyone is here to speak on anything that is not a public hearing and would like to speak, please make sure you've filled out a green sheet and given it to staff.
Hello, my name is Clara Regal. I live at 3712 Autumn Wood Lane here in Okemos. So how did we get here? We got here because in August of 2022, which was an off election, so it wasn't November election, everyone knows they don't get as many votes in August, we voted on whether or not we wanted to have marijuana dispensaries in Meridian Township. And the vote was the official election, and I'm reading from Lansing State Journal, the official election summary results for the proposal was a 12-vote margin, so 12 votes difference. 6,146 yes votes to prohibit marijuana businesses and 6,158 no votes to defeat the proposal and allow recreational marijuana establishments in the township. Okay, so it was worded kind of weird as well. The revote still had the proposal passing with six votes, although not all the precepts were counted. So if we consider how many people live in Meridian Township, that's about 25% roughly people that voted. Half of those people didn't want this. So now we're talking about 12% of the citizens making the decision for the rest of us. I know that's the way that democracy works, but I think we need to consider that when we're considering the location of this marijuana dispensary. Maybe we have to have them. I don't agree. I don't, I think we have had enough, but we need to really consider the location. And I'm here to say that at least 700 of my fellow neighbors on change.org, the petition that's going around, agree with me. The location is inappropriate because it is too close to the schools, too close to the schools. That's the number one issue that people write down. Yes, it's within the legal limit, but just because we can do something doesn't mean we shouldn't do it. We've got the elementary schools, Hiawatha, we've got the two middle schools, we've got Okemos High School, we've got Bennett Woods, and we have an alternative high school that's across the way. So we really need to consider that location. It's easy on and off the highway for people that may have nefarious reasons for being there. It may increase our crime, it's going to increase our traffic, increase impaired drivers potentially in that intersection. That's a family-friendly community park. I don't want a mega store there. I don't want a mega marijuana store. I don't think any of my fellow citizens do either. We've got really nice, family-friendly businesses there and I want them to stay there. So I really hope that you consider this very seriously before you pass your vote. And I thank you for allowing me to speak to you.
Thank you. Next up, we have David Possat.
Hi, I'm Dr. David Possat and I'm from 3712 Autumn Wood Lane in Okemos. The last time you spoke, you were reassured that this was going to be only a place where 21-year-olds could go in and purchase anyone over 21 and that you were reassured that it was going to be highly regulated. You all were reassured of that. The problem is, once that customer goes in and purchases a whole bunch of gummies, he walks out the door and goes and starts to distribute it to our grade schools, our middle schools and our high schools, it's no longer regulated, is it? It's now a dealer. So now longer, no longer do you have regulations anymore, do you? So who's going to regulate the distribution of these to our schools? Who's going to regulate when they lace the substances with other substances? Who's going to regulate that? Who's going to regulate them when these dealers actually put fentanyl in it and one of our children dies? 100,000 people have died from fentanyl. Who's going to regulate that? Who's going to regulate the dispensary when they advertise enticingly? We all know these dispensers are really good at marketing, aren't they? They're going to entice our kids to think they want or need this stuff. Who's going to regulate that? Who's going to regulate it? Now, you know, there's been a lot of talk about the dangers to our kids and everything. None of us are making this up. This is from the CDC, the Center for Disease Control, the cannabis and teens and what it does to the brains of these children, how it poisons them. They're developing, their brains are developing, and we're going to have dealers running around stuffing this in our schools. Who's going to regulate all this? Why are we even thinking about this? This has nothing. I looked at the executive summary of the plan. You guys have a plan, a five- or seven-year plan. There's nothing in your summary that has this as part of our goals. Why is this like one of your focuses, to put five dispensaries in our city? Who's going to regulate these children when they're, it just doesn't make sense. We don't even understand why you're even focusing on this issue. This should be at the bottom of the list. Less than 1%, less than probably 0.1% of people, the difference between who voted for this and didn't, that's who you're really working with. And you're going down a whole path as if this was a mandate, that the city wanted this. Nobody wants this. Only maybe 12%. So please, if a child dies of fentanyl, you're going to have to decide whether you are part of the problem here. This is an extremely serious decision. Those little brains are developing. This is the CDC, I'm going to give you this here in this one through you two. Please, these children are, their brains are developing. It's, they're so addictive.
Thank you for your comment.
Okay, thank you.
Next up is Jay Meyer. And if there's anyone else who is here to provide public comments on any of the items that are not on tonight's agenda as a public hearing, this would be the time to do it. Please get a green sheet and turn it in to staff.
Greetings, everybody. I appreciate the opportunity to talk. My name is Jay Meyer. I've been a resident in Meridian Township since 1987. I will second the comments of my neighbors.
Can you please share your address, too? Thanks.
3720 Autumn Wood Lane.
Thank you.
In Okemos, thank you. I'm going to second the comments of my neighbors who made comments with respect to the medical issues and the dangerous impacts on our youth. There's no question about that. Where I'm going to go on a tangent is we had so few people in the area vote for this with only a slight margin of approval. I have a question about that. If one of the biggest reasons why you guys are taking this on is because the township might derive some extra funds with all the dangerous aspects, I have a serious problem and many of my neighbors would have the same. I don't think any of my neighbors were voting to have this on Okemos Road and Jolly. I guarantee it. And I think that the Board should consider at least putting this up again as a vote. You'd get a lot more response than the small amounts that you got already. I think this should not be railroaded through by any sense. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking. Is there anyone else who would like to speak during this point of the public remarks? Okay, thank you. Public remarks are closed. We'll move on to approval of the agenda.
Approval of the agenda as regulated?
Support.
Okay, moved by Commissioner McConnell and seconded by Commissioner Scales to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Agenda is approved. And now approval of the minutes of the May 13th, 2024 Planning Commission Regular Meeting.
I move to approve the minutes of the May 13th, 2024 meeting. Second.
Okay, any comment on the agenda? Moved by Commissioner Scale, I'm sorry, thank you, minutes. Moved by Commissioner Scale, seconded by Commissioner Blumer. Any discussion?
Excellent minutes, as always.
I had one very, very, very minor thing and I'm not sure if it was my misstatement or it was number 14 on adjournment, it said, "Close the meeting," and I thought I said, "Adjust the meeting." And I'm not sure if it matters, but that would be, if it matters, that would be my proposed change.
It's an easy change.
Okay, thank you. So.
I got, staff got that close to a perfect.
I don't want to be nitpicky. You can't let them get comfortable there. All right, so Commissioner Scales?
Well, then my comment also would have been to adjourn.
Okay. So noted.
All right, thank you. With that friendly amendment, all in favor of approval of the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, minutes are approved with that minor change. Thank you very much. Item six, communications. We had a number of them in our packet. Have there been any other communications? I think you gave us one.
You have one email regarding fetal rezoning in front of you that came in late last night.
Okay, great. So we have that in front of us and that'll be printed in the next packet, correct?
Um.
Is it usually?
Not typically. It's kept in the record for the, in the folder if you want it printed, if you want it in the next packet, though we can include that.
Okay. I wasn't sure what past practice was, but follow practice, that works for me. And I had just a quick question on item N on the communications for Williamstown Township. Will see that when it comes through? This is just a FYI for us that it's coming?
Yeah, this is the required, so for the audience, when a surrounding, when a community begins the process of updating their master plan, Michigan Planning Law says that they have to send out what's called a letter of intent to plan to surrounding communities and some infrastructure companies, et cetera. And it is simply a letter saying, hey, we're about to begin the master plan process. So you're right, Ms. Chair, you will be seeing more from Williamstown Township in the future.
Okay, great, thank you. Now we are down to item seven, public hearings, and we have three tonight. The first is item Township Ordinance, yeah, we'll open the public hearing at 6:45 with the report from Chief Planner Shorkey, and if I mangled your title, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
On Township Ordinance Amendment, 24010 on the Village of Namoka Ordinance Update. Thank you.
So before I get into all the agenda items, this is something the Planning Commission asked us to put in and just to summarize what's going on today. We have three public hearings and you'll have the staff summary report, a presentation from applicant. In this case, there won't be because this is a text amendment. Public comment, three minutes per person, and then Planning Commission discussion, and then that's followed by an informal poll. The Planning Commission is not allowed by their bylaws to make a decision on the night of the Planning Commission. All of that will come back for the follow-up meeting. That follow-up meeting is item eight, and there's a staff summary of the request, real quick, very brief update, presentation from applicant, if any, Planning Commission discussion, and then that is the final vote and that is roll call vote. On the rezoning, note that this focus is on the rezoning itself, not the development. The development plan will come in at a later phase if the rezoning is approved. That is a separate process. There will be another public hearing for that. Development review process is similar, the same thing. Planning Commission will give staff an informal vote, a direction on where to go. In two weeks, we'll come back and make a decision on the rezoning request. And with that, let's get into the first one. This is, not in front of me. Here we go.
Is there a chance that you could pull this up a little bit?
This is text amendment number 24010, Village of Namoka Updates. So just a little bit of background, we, staff, so the Village of Namoka language has several references that were incorrect. In the process of updating that and correcting the references, staff discussed this with Planning Commission a number of times, the possibility of taking those references out, just spelling the text out and in the process, amending the language somewhat. Village of Namoka is a very specific area. In the process of doing this, it was very, no one's land use was changed or anything like that. Under uses permitted by right, the reference to the RB district is removed, as I said, and replaced with the complete list of uses. All that does is spell that out so that if the RB district is ever changed in the future, it doesn't inadvertently screw with the RN district. It does remove golf courses as those are technically allowed in the RN district, but probably not a good land use in the RN district. References to signage has been removed since we do have a very recently updated sign ordinance that regulates signage in the township in general. Paragraph C, uses permitted by special use permits, similar. There was a, there was a very subjective reference to anything allowed by the Planning Commission or the planning director is allowed as a special use permit. We've taken that subject, subjective out. That is the whole issue with that. And also, under special use permit, group childcare homes was added. That brings, that's similar to our other residential districts. That brings that into state planning law, conformance of state planning law. Also incidental commercial services was removed. That was seen as very intense for the intent of the RN district. The references to the dimensional regulations have been removed and spelled out, but no changes to any of the dimensional regulations has been made. So you may recommend approval as written, approval of a revised version, or recommend denial. And there is a draft, it says redlined, it came out purple this time, but this is what we're talking about. You can see all uses by right in the RB district. These are the uses in the RB district, removing golf courses, as I said. And with that, I can answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Does anybody on the commission have questions for staff? Thank you very much.
This is a public hearing, so.
Okay, at this point, I don't have any green sheets for anyone who wishes to speak on this item. If anyone would like to, please let us know and fill out a green sheet right now. Seeing no one, I think our next point is for if someone would like to entertain a motion to.
Not a formal motion.
I'm sorry, we're on, we're on public hearing. Okay, then I guess if there are no comments from commissioners, then let's do a stop poll. Those who indicate they would be supportive of this proposal moving forward for the text amendment number two.
24010.
24010, thank you. Too many pieces of paper in front of me here today. Thank you. Commissioner Scales? Yes, support? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. No, so indicate approval. This is not a formal approval at this point. It'll come back next, next meeting.
We will be back with a resolution of approval that will go to the Township Board for their review and approval as well.
Thank you very much. And I'm going to close this public hearing at 6:52, 6:54, and move us on to our next public hearing, which is for special land use permit number 24012, Consumers Transfer Station on Rutherford Drive. Same, same process. Please go ahead, Mr. Shorkey.
Very quickly, Consumers Energy has a substation, it's a pit substation on the south side of Lake Lansing Road that is in the city of East Lansing. They are looking to replace that with a more permanent facility. They have purchased this piece of property on the northeast corner of Rutherford Drive and Lake Lansing Road. It is a residentially zoned property and this falls under that category of non-residential uses allowed in residential districts. The property is zoned RB and basically, the issues that you're going to run into with this, it's, the special use permit is going to be followed by the site plan. The site plan requires the approval of three variances. This property fronts on Rutherford Drive, so immediately you run into a front yard setback and a rear yard setback issue. Those two variances have already been applied for. As has a third variance, our fence regulation has a maximum of six feet for a residential fence. They are proposing a seven-foot opaque fence on the north property line and the east property line. That extra foot is also necessitating a variance. That hearing is coming up this month. Other than that, you're not going to see traffic. They have one truck who comes in periodically to check the substation. It's locked the rest of the time and that's pretty much everything I have to say on this. The applicant is here to address questions.
Thank you. Do any of the members have questions? Okay, if we could hear from the applicant, that would be great.
Sure.
Please introduce yourself and.
Yeah, absolutely. My name is Anthony Stepke, project manager for Consumers Energy.
Amy Guppin, permit agent for Consumers Energy.
If you will share a little bit more about what you're doing.
Sure, yeah, we can. So the facility we're putting in as a planner here mentioned is a gas regulator station, so it is what supplies gas to the distribution system in the neighborhood here and beyond. And what it does is it regulates gas down from high pressure to medium pressure, which is essentially the pressure of gas you have up to the regulator outside your home if you do have natural gas. So it is the supply, like I said, for the neighborhood. It's currently located in the right-of-way, as you mentioned, south of Lake Lansing Road. We wanted to get it out of the right-of-way and the station was, I think, built in the like 40s or 50s. It's quite old. So it's part of our plan that we've made as a commitment to upgrade our facilities, put in new equipment, there's new monitoring equipment and things like that that we're installing here to make it safe and reliable and continue on for another, you know, 50, 60 years or beyond, you know, as we go before we rebuild it in the future. And so we wanted to have a permanent lot as opposed to being in the road right-of-way.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Go ahead.
Yes.
I'm not sure.
Go ahead.
Not sure which part's for the applicant, which part's for staff, but could you talk a little bit more about the fence? You said the variance has been applied for, so that's already an application that won't come here because we don't see those.
I mean, you know this.
Yes.
Either way, either way, we're talking.
Okay, yeah, I can answer so that your question about the fence.
Yeah.
Okay, so why are we applying for a variance?
Why do you need an extra high fence? I'm just curious.
Okay, so Consumers Energy's standard policy, so a couple of things. We're regulated by both the state government and then like federal regulations as well. One of One of the requirements of the TSA for, you know, energy companies is to secure its facilities. And so, they do put out guidelines for us to follow, and our company, Consumers, has regulated that our facilities do have a six-foot fence. Typically, our, our standard detail is chain link with one foot of barbed wire, making it seven-foot. We are, in this specific case, we did make a agreement with the landowner who we purchased the lot from. He does have the lot directly to the east of us, and then, the two, actually, to the east of us. He, he did ask for an opaque fence between us and him, which we agreed to. That is actually, it's not seven-foot, it's eight-foot, and it's a, it's a vinyl privacy fence. The fence on the Rutherford and Lake Lansing roads are, is chain link, is what we're proposing, our standard seven-foot fence there. We're actually, yeah, we have seven-foot with one foot of barbed wire, making it eight-foot to match the eight-foot that we have on the back. Normally, we do six and one, but in this case, we wanted to match the two fence heights. So, we do have that for security measures, so that, you know, we don't have anyone walking up to our facility and accidentally messing with gas equipment, so...
And if I'm, if I'm correct, if somebody had a concern about that fence, that would be a, a meeting of the ZBA that would consider that variance request?
It is the zoning board of appeals that is considering that variance request, yes.
Thank you.
And they will meet on the third Wednesday.
Commissioner, it's done? Commissioner McCallum? Commissioner Scales?
Thank you. I've got a couple of questions. You said that other regulator system was built in the 40s or the 50s?
Yes, sir.
And it's old?
Yes, sir.
I was built in the 50s. But, moving forward, I'd like to ask you, what happens to that old regulator, regulatory system, or what is it?
It's not careful. So, it's a regulator station is what it's called.
A regulator station. What happens to that old system once you put this one in?
Correct, yes. So, I can answer that. The existing station, what we're going to do, and it's, there's a little bit more to this because the, the station is on the south side, but what we're going to do is, we isolate the old station, we stop gas flowing to it, and we do that during the non-winter months. In this case, we're looking at September of kind of a construction timeframe. So, we isolate that station from the distribution systems, both the high and the medium pressure systems, and we take that station out, and then we're building pipes from the south side to the north side. And in most cases, we're trying to build in the same lot that we have, but in this case, it's a right-of-way. So, it's going to be brought back to grass and grade where it normally is. There won't be anything there, other than the pipes that are existing in the ground for the distribution system, which we won't be removing. But where the existing station is, there won't be anything there.
Okay. And this Rutherford station, how many, what's the density of the population that it'll be serving?
How much does this station serve, is what you're asking?
I'm asking, what is the density of the population that this will be serving?
Okay, I mean, I don't have an exact number for you. I, I could certainly follow up with that at the next meeting to give you a more precise number. But just to give an explanation, I think the next closest one that we have in the general area is on Bircham and Hagedorn, is, is the next closest one. In the whole state, there's about 700 of these.
Okay.
In the Lansing area, there's probably 30 or so, like, the greater Lansing area. I, I, that's just a rough guess at what I...
So, this is a, this is serving a major amount of population, is what I've assumed.
It would probably be, you know, 10 to 20,000, would be my guess.
Okay. You, you might want to have those figures readily available, because it will help your, your case for why you need this fence. Obviously, this could be a piece of critical infrastructure, and it can't be, if it's, if it's taken out, it can affect 20,000 homes.
Right. Yeah, that's, that's one of the reasons why we're wanting to move from the existing pit, which is essentially a box that's sunken in the ground with the regulation equipment off the side of the road, off, you know, further off the road to the north, to where someone, you know, couldn't drive off the road and, you know, run into this accidentally. That's part of the reason for moving to the, you know, buying a piece of property and send it further back from Lake Lansing. But I can, we can follow up with the numbers for you on the estimated, it, it's one of these things, it's, it's kind of hard to give you, like, an exact number, because there are multiple stations. It's essentially, the, the natural gas system in Lansing and across the state, it's, it's a grid system that has multiple points of connection at different spots. And so, regulator stations, what they do, like I said, is to take high-pressure gas and regulate it down to medium-pressure gas, which essentially, for gas, what we do is, that's how you move gas from point A to point B. You bring it up to higher pressure, and then you, you cut the pressure down in order to move it from point A to point B. And like I said, I, I can ask our systems planning team to get you a more precise number to maybe strengthen that case or give you an idea of what it actually affects, but I couldn't tell you off the top of my head what that exact number is.
The key component that I'm asking, is this a piece of critical infrastructure? If, if state police, emergency management, homeland security division said, list all of your critical infrastructure, would this be on your list?
I mean, I would say, it does provide natural gas in the winter to the customers in the area, yeah.
Okay.
So, I, I would argue that it does.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Blumer?
Do you anticipate that this new facility will improve your supply of gas to the area, or simply is it just newer and therefore less likely to break down?
Um, yeah, so what our systems planning group does is they do evaluate over the next 10 to 15 years, the population growth and demands in natural gas. So, they do account for increases in consumption of it. And so, yes, it will better handle the growth of population, the demand of gas, over the next 10 to 15 years, is what they kind of look at. What we do with these reg stations, limitation is the regulator itself, which is something we can change out. But there's other aspects of this. Not only do we get it out of the road right-of-way, we also do add measurement equipment, communication equipment, that feeds back to our gas control system in Jackson, where they can remotely monitor these stations and determine if there's a change in the aspects of, of the gas system, and it reports it immediately, and we can call out our operations personnel to go and address an issue. Of course, these regulator stations are built now with redundancies and overpressure protection and things like that, which provide extra protection for customers now, whereas, like, you know, earlier on, those, those weren't regulated at the time, back, you know, in the 40s and 50s, and regulations have built over time. And so, installing some of the new equipment we're providing, not only does it make it a safer facility, but it also does account for growth in demand as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Commissioner Snyder.
Can you tell me what the appearance of...
What's it going to look like?
Yeah, because I'm finding different images online and, and also just in looking at the pre-existing one that you mentioned on Hagedorn and Bircham. I'm, I'm just curious, how, how this one will look?
Can we scroll to the existing picture?
Oh, yeah, it's on page...
I think you have one...
Is it a drawing or...?
No, there's a picture of the old one.
I think I'm looking at that, too.
Yes, maybe.
It's 48, yeah.
You're doing it, so...
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so that's the one you're placing. Okay.
There you go. Garrett, let me...
It's okay. I, I have it. I have it.
Yeah, no, well, just for the...
It's kind of like nestled in the ground, basically.
I'm sorry.
It looks like a storm shelter.
Yeah, it does. It's interesting, because the one on Hagedorn and Bircham is a bigger structure.
There we go.
So, like I mentioned, the existing station right now currently looks like a old green box that's sunken in the ground. It's just off to the side of the road there on the south side. The new stations, what we try to do, like I said, is to, one, we do raise some of the equipment above grade, one, to avoid, like, getting out of that, that box if it does rain or you do have snow and stuff. You get water in there, it freezes, you have problems with, with freezes and stuff like that with the equipment, which causes issues. So, we do raise these stations above grade. We do provide buildings now to provide, you know, cover for the elements for our operations folks. So, it's a, it's an ergonomic improvement, and there's, I would, I would argue, some visual improvement to, to these stations. So, what it's going to look like is, you're going to have a fence at the very front of the fence, which is here. If you're looking from north, from Lake Lansing Road, you'll have these valves here, which are the essentially inlet and outlet of the station, will be above grade, it'll be, they're really small, it's, it's two-inch and four-inch pipe, so, I mean, you're talking pipe that's about, you know, not very big. And, and valves there that will be above grade, and then it, it goes back below grade after that. And then, there's one piece of equipment here, which is a filter separator, filters out particulates in the gas that's above grade. You only see that for, you know, several feet, and then it goes back again, and then you'll see the building. So, what you'll see, when you look at this site, will be a fence with some pipe that's above ground in two different areas, and then there'll be the building itself, which will be a steel building. There's plant, pictures in the plans further on. And then you'll see, obviously, it'll be a chain link fence in the front, and you'll see a, a vinyl fence in the back. And we can make that fence color whatever. I think we have proposed, like, it's a kind of a tannish-brown color on the back end. And then this dark, this kind of like gray area here is, it's crushed limestone, and that's to prevent any sort of vegetation growth within the facility itself. And then the same with, with the driveway. It's, it's a crushed limestone driveway as well.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah, sorry, I don't have, like, a picture I could pull up here.
That's okay. No, I, I looked at the one on Hagedorn and Bircham, and it sounds exactly like what you're describing here, too.
Right. It'll be, it'll be similar to that. There's one that we did, Grand River and Waverly, it might be hard to see on Google Earth, though. And then, there's another one close to Michigan State as well, that we built in the last couple of years, so... If you want other examples, we can provide them.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'm assuming you looked at other, or, my only concern with this was that it was right next to homes. And so, did you, does it have to be in this sort of location, or...
Yeah, so, to, to answer that question, what we attempted to do, first and foremost, was to look to buy property on the south side there from the school. I think it's White Hills, I think it's what the elementary school. We were in discussions with them, but then they decided that they didn't want this next to the school. So, we essentially had to look for areas, when we build these, they have to be relatively close to the actual distribution mains that run.
Right.
And you need high pressure to tie into the medium pressure. Medium pressure is kind of spread like a spider web through the area, but the high pressure only runs in certain areas. And so, our high pressure runs on the south side of Lake Lansing Road, east and west. It kind of follows Lake Lansing as it curves to the north there. So, we had to be in a location that is close to one of those areas, and this happened to be an empty lot that was relative, was the closest we could be to both the high pressure and then the medium pressure itself, without disturbing or buying some, somebody's house or something like that, and changing a lot pretty drastically.
And you're worried, and I, from what you said, you're, you don't want this on the Lake Lansing maintenance road, because you're worried about cars running into it?
This is not going to be, this is not allowed on Lake Lansing Road. It fronts on Rutherford. That's a requirement.
Well, I'm saying, but the original property they owned, where the original...
Oh, I apologize.
...thing was.
Yeah, that, I mean, that's obviously a concern with, you know, any piece of equipment you put on the side of the road there, you know?
Right.
Like, the light poles, for example, I mean, someone could hit that, too.
Sure.
And cause a power outage. But, yeah, we, we would obviously prefer it to be set off the road. One, it's better access for our employees as, you know, to, they don't have to park on the side of the road and worry about being hit by, uh, someone else. Unless they can actually pull off into the facility behind it, and it's a lot, much less, you know, busy road there. So, it, it, it's beneficial for our employees as well as the general public. We do have these facilities in a lot of, in some cases even closer to homes than this is, which shows 42 feet to the property line, to the north. And I think that house is actually pretty close on the north side to, to their property line, but we, we have them, I, I built one last year that was probably 20 feet from the house. So, it, it's, I, I, we build them safe, and we're obviously adding additional monitoring equipment to, you know, have even more, you know, overview of, of this facility remotely that's being monitored 24/7, whereas the existing station doesn't even have that communication equipment that's, this station, as we have proposed, will have. So, hopefully that answers...
Yeah, thank you.
Go ahead, Commissioner Snyder.
So, given its location in a residential area, and also historically, this area has, you know, seen a lot of, just, I remember moving back to Michigan, and it was, of course, in 2008 wasn't the best time to be moving and trying to find a job, but there were a lot of foreclosures in this area, was no stranger to that, and there's been a lot of home improvement in that area, like a tremendous amount of effort and beautification. And so, I don't mean to belabor the point, but I do feel that, you know, it's in the best interests of the residents there that this, you know, looks, that it goes with the look of the improvements that have been made. And I have a question about the fencing, the requested eight-foot-tall privacy or opaque fence. It doesn't appear in the, on the plans as though there's barbed wire to be placed on the top of that, but it is to be on top of the chain link fence, which is seven feet tall. Can you help me understand why?
Yeah, so, Consumers facilities, the standard is, like I mentioned, chain link with the three strands of barbed wire measuring in a foot above it. That's the standard fence. We would normally place that, you know, 360 degrees all the way around the facility. In this case, we, as I mentioned, we made a, a agreement with the owner to the, two property, two properties to the left there, I think it's a business, that he, he did want an opaque fence there. Our, our procedures, our, sorry, our security standards basically allow for that opaque fence, as long as it's eight-foot tall. That's the reason why the, there's a difference. We do want to have visibility into the station from the road front, and so that's why we do, we're maintaining that chain link on the front edge.
So, the, the chain link, is that only on Rutherford and not on Lake Lansing?
No, it, it's, it's both, sorry, both front edges, Lake Lansing and Rutherford.
Is there, I mean, is there any potential, would it be possible to make the whole thing enclosed with an opaque fence if the approval is given for an eight-foot-tall fence?
For, no, we would prefer to have visibility in. I mean, it's, it's one of those things, we do have many different places on, you know, throughout Lansing, and we do have operations, they don't, I mean, they're driving by these facilities, and if, you know, if you see something wrong, or if someone else sees something wrong, they can call it in. But if there's an opaque fence, you might not see anything, right? Because you're, you're looking at a vinyl fence.
It may even be more objectionable.
So, we, our, our preference would be to, to have visibility in.
Sure. I understand. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, and this is a public hearing. I do not have any green sheets for anyone who said that they wish to speak at this public hearing, but if there is anyone here who would like to, this is the time to fill out a green sheet and come speak, please.
I think you're okay at the moment. She's open, it, it looks like.
Do you want it, anyone?
Yeah, you got it.
Thank you.
Okay, it's, it's me again.
All right.
Roger Taylor, sixty-eight-nine East Lake Drive. Uh, I just listened to this. Uh, it sounds like we're changing the grade of this particular area. Uh, I think it'd be appropriate for some kind of geological survey where that rainwater's gonna go. And also, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but uh I won't direct us at the, at the board of water and lights or whoever's doing this, but I'll direct it to you is uh, the, the valves are, they have special materials in them. Should we do an environmental survey of those old valves that could be in the soil that could impact the neighborhoods around them? That's all I got to say.
Thank you very much, Mr. Taylor. I don't see anyone else here for public comment on this, so at this point I will entertain if.
Hold on a sec.
Oh, sorry.
All right, sir, all right. Are you commenting on this?
Not on this one.
Oh, okay, okay.
Um, uh, yes, let's drop poll vote, please. Um, those who are likely to be in favor, who say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. So staff, that should give you direction for next time and I will call this public hearing closed at seven twenty.
Thank you very much.
And we'll move on to our third public hearing and third and final public hearing for the night, um, rezoning number two four zero one three, Fidewa Holdings, Dobie Road.
Okay. Fidewa Holdings has requested the rezoning of a property approximately four point two eight acres in size. I will refer to that as the subject property. It is located adjacent to the north of four five one five Dobie Road. You know it as Faith Lutheran Church. The request is to change it from R double A, single family, low density to R C, multiple family with a maximum of fourteen dwelling units per acre. Similar rezoning request was denied in twenty nineteen. And at that time, the reason stated for the denial was that it was not in conformance with the master plan, which at that time showed that as institutional. Uh, last year, the master plan was updated. Faith Lutheran Church was very proactive about coming in and asking for this area of their property to be changed to future land, to, on the future land use map to multifamily residential. Ultimately, the planning commission agreed and then ultimately the township board approved that. Uh, subsequently, we got a land division that created the subject property in twenty twenty-three, late in twenty twenty-three. So let me, I can't zoom in any further? Okay, well, this is the future land use map from the twenty twenty-three master plan update. This is the portion that was changed to multifamily residential. The request to change that was based on the original application. That was two point nine acres. The land division came in, now the land division wasn't attached to a rezoning or anything. It was a standalone land division application. Planning law is very clear. It conformed to the zoning district. We had, we had to process it. The rezoning came in for the entire four point three acres. So what you get is this kind of split master plan designation on the whole subject property. Uh, the zoning, as I said, is R double A, it is R C adjacent to the north and northeast and R double A all the way around. The site does front on Dobie Road. Um, we had a traffic assessment that staff updated to reflect the larger site based on the traffic assessment and the standards in the zoning ordinance. We do not anticipate that a full traffic study is going to be required for this. I will also note that the forty-five units that's used in the traffic assessment overstates the case and via email, I've been informed that only thirty-five units are being proposed. Um, municipal water and sewer are available to serve the site. That's not any issue whatsoever. Um, as far as issues go, it's the traffic, it's the master plan designation. Um, I do have a concept plan that came in. It's certainly not gonna qualify for a site plan in the future, but this does give an idea of what they're talking about. Um, let me back it up a little bit. So you see Dobie Road here, five buildings, thirty-five units total. Um, I will note that, that southern portion that, that split master plan designation, a lot of it is taken up with a required fifty-foot buffer. Because this is adjacent to residentially zoned property, all the development has to stay at least fifty feet away on the west side and on the, on the south side as well. Um, other than that, if you have any questions, I can answer. Is the applicant here? Thank you. Sorry, I haven't met you guys yet. Um, so the applicant's here to answer questions as well, and this is a public hearing and you do have some green sheets in front of you on this case.
Great, thank you. So I guess we'll hear from the applicant first, if you would, if you share any more.
Am I?
Uh, good evening, planning members. My name is Jerry Fidewa. I live at six zero nine nine East Lake Drive. And this is David Fidewa.
I live at two seven eight Haslett Road, Haslett, Michigan.
And I'm Jack Fidewa, I live at seven zero three zero Coleman Road, Ha- Haas.
Thank you.
Okay, we're before you.
Oh, sorry.
Uh, we're, we're before you today requesting a rezoning of a four acre parcel that is on Dobie Road uh just north of the Lutheran Church. Uh, and uh it is currently, it's a uh, we purchased a parcel, it's a four acre parcel that has been uh in the uh, in the inventory of the, of the Lutheran Church. And uh, so has not been, there's been no taxes paid on that. And we're proposing to put uh thirty-five to forty units on this parcel. And we have a unique uh, we have a unique system that we're working with. And the system that we have is, we have uh three bedroom and four bedroom townhomes that each have their own garage and each have their own uh front door. Every single one of our three bedroom units is occupied. And we have, we're, we're servicing, they're, they're a little bit on the upscale side. So they're servicing the doctors that are from McLaren, new doctors, resident doctors from McLaren, Sparrow Hospital, uh, and university professors and the like. And we just don't have anywhere near enough of, enough units available to service the, it's growing. This township is growing. We have a lot of demand and we have to keep saying no because we don't have enough of these particular, this particular style. I know that there is a number of units that have been uh, that have been built or have been proposed to be built that are units that are high rises with central entrances without garages. And uh, uh, there is a very big demand for what we have. So we're, we're proposing that. We're in a location where it's like the center of Oakhamus and the schools, the grade schools and the high, high schools are too far from there. Uh, we have all the services of water, sewer, gas and electric right there. There is a bus stop right in front of this property. Uh, we have um adjacent to the east uh is a multifamily project. Uh, adjacent and to the north is a multifamily project. To the south is the Lutheran Church, which uh they have expressed an interest in making sure this, this uh multifamily works for us. And then to the west is single family. Um, and um, so that, so it would face on two or three residences because of the, of the frontage that is there. Um, and I think that David, Michael, or David, you got some response here to add to this?
Um, one of the things that, um, you know, as we were kind of trying to do a site design, we were looking at how do we keep um eh, within the township's requirements? We're not doing a variance. Um, we are also, you know, our previous building that Jerry was talking about that we rent out in Oakhamus and Haslett is a three-story building. And so this building that we designed is a two-story building. So we've cut down on the height of the building and we've tried to really stay within the township requirements, so we're not, we're not gonna be asking for a variance on this property as these um buildings lie.
Anything, Greg? And if you don't want, I got some more to add.
Um, I'm good for right now.
Uh, the reason I bring that David and Greg along is, is that uh they're going to be part of this development. Uh, they're, they've taken over my building company and uh so it's going to be a joint effort. And I have built four, five or six multifamily projects to date. And so we're well versed, we're the developers and builders of Sierra Ridge. Um, and uh, we've, we've, we've done some rezoning. Uh, we've done five buildings of multifamily. Um, we've been very successful at it. Uh, we have a good name in the township for our development, our home building company. Um, and uh, so I hope that you will work with us to put this land to work uh for us, for the residents of Meridian and for the township for a tax base as well. And if you have questions, we're here to answer questions.
Thank you. Mr. Skills?
Thank you, Mr. Fidewa. I've known you for quite some time and I've known the work that you've done and you do do good work for this township and very appreciative of that.
Thank you.
But I do have some questions for you. Uh, one of the questions I have is, I heard our principal planner say thirty-five uh units instead of forty-five units, and then I heard you say thirty-five to forty units. I'd like to know how many units?
Well, the reason that we have it as a flexible amount is we haven't got it in front of our engineers to map it out, to find out the amount of detention that is needed uh and what it will be, the township requirements for uh fire trucks in and out. Uh, so there is a little bit of play. And we put it on paper and uh we easily get thirty-five. Uh, but it's, it's four acres, it's fourteen units an acre. So if there's room i- in the development to add a few more units, we would like to do that. So we would not like to be uh obligated to stay, to stay to a certain number, but we think that it's thirty-five to forty. And once we get it engineered, it would be the, if we're as approved, uh, we would get it engineered and make that presentation uh at the time that we would be dealing with the number of units that, and you'll have another, we'll have another go around and a discussion on exactly how many units that will, that, that parcel will accommodate.
Mr. Fidewa, can I follow up on that, please?
Yes, please.
So this rezoning, um, if it's approved, will be followed up with a special use permit. Specifics will be nailed out at that point. I was reacting to an email and I guess, you know, it wasn't a public email, so I apologize if I spoke in error, but the specific thirty-five to forty will be, if this is approved, nailed out at that point. So you will see this again more specifically than this.
Last question I have, if you don't mind, is, is there any pushback from the, the citizens surrounding this?
We're gonna find out.
We have public comment coming up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Maybe just a uh comment uh for the applicant. Delighted you um called out that, that bus stop there. I'm a frequent user. Um, and as we move down the sort of site plan phase, anything you can do to make that as accessible to uh anybody who might uh be living in, in the new development will make it a more attractive application.
Absolutely. It, it is right, it's right there, right out in front. And, you know, uh, the, our Lutheran church uh friends, they say, well, there could be several Persians that would be attending the church. I mean, it, it would add to the uh, you know, walkability, um, the shopping and restaurants and all of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Commissioner Brooks.
Um, I don't recall if you mentioned this. Did you say anything whether this was gonna be rental or?
No, they are rental.
They're all rentals?
They are all rentals.
Okay.
Thank you, that was gonna be my question.
Yeah.
Um, but I do have one more. Um, I heard you say upscale and I had thought that I heard at one point that the intent of some of this land was to be affordable housing and upscale and affordable don't always necessarily jibe, so tell me more.
Uh, well, uh, if we were probably hitting the target of affordability, we would be looking to add fourteen units an acre for all four acres. So uh, so twenty-eight and it would be like sixty or sixty-four uh units, which would be something that would be uh not allow a two-car garage and uh on that. So once you, uh, and, and once you, once we, or what we have found out is uh, we have a lot of folks who have, we've built homes for that have gone from our multifamily project to buying a new home in, in, in the Meridian Township. And uh, they, they do that because they like the, they come to the area, they, where they've gotten their job at work, they've continue on with their job. And then they get to a stage where they say, well, we've outgrown the townhome, now we wanna build a house. So I, I think it's a, it's stepping stone for a lot of folks to stay in the area. And, and we've had folks stay at these townhome units for three and even four years.
Any other questions? Okay, uh, thank you very much for your presentation. We do have some people here who have filled out forms to provide public comment as part of this public hearing, so. Um, and I was remiss in saying this earlier, but it is the practice of the, uh, the planning commission not to respond directly to public comment. Um, your comments may inspire questions that we might have for staff or the applicant, but we don't generally engage in conversation with people providing public comment. So I didn't want you, anyone to think we were rude if we were not responding to you. Um, the first person I have who signed up to do public comment is Joel Major.
Thanks, my name's Joel Major. My residence is forty-five seventy Seneca. You should probably be handing out this particular drawing. You might wanna keep it to reference everyone else's. My lot is right here on the northwest corner. My intent today was to bring up the vote seven to nothing of twenty nineteen that this board made on this same piece of property citing multiple easements, drainage, water uh and traffic impact at that time. That was a two point, two point nine acre yielding forty dwellings stressing the Dobie corridor. Water and drain issues, the lowest spot is right in front of my property. That spot is at least forty to fifty below grade of the water retention ponds that they have already designated. And that one particular possible dwelling is at least the lowest spot where all the water collects from all the other housing. And so what we have now in twenty twenty-four is a new proposal for four point two eight acre parcel that I, I, I understand there's debate thirty-five or forty, but that would yield potentially sixty dwellings based on the math of what that allowance or what your zoning would do. That greater uh square footage of roof would disperse more water where challenging already the low-lying property next to all of the properties that you have listed there on there. The basic site plan proposal alleviates one of the easement issues, which is the standoff that was nicely noted uh by your principal planner, but it doesn't negate where the parking, the garbage, where the other power and the other items that were cited originally in twenty nineteen. garbage, where the other power and the other items that were cited originally in 2019 by one of the commission members. The traffic impact increases family 40 to 60. Additionally, what has transpired in the last five years is Faith Lutheran is now the polling location for all four precincts. And this particular proposal eliminates one of their driveways. So all four precincts now have to vote at Faith Lutheran with one driveway in addition to all the 35, 40, or 60 debated families that are impacting that. So you have drainage issues that don't go away, that doesn't change in the last five. You have greater roofline, you have power, you have one easement handled on the standoff. And now you have a big negative impact on traffic allowance. So I'm asking that you consider opposing the same rezoning as the 2019 board did and uphold that precedent that they already issued. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Michael McIntosh.
Hello. My name is Michael McIntosh. I reside at 4562 Seneca Drive. Dear board members, I had thought about and previously wanted to bring up to you all of the issues that would arise from the splitting and rezoning of this parcel, whether that was already the congested traffic on the Dobie and Grand River intersection, where the stormwater that coats the land behind my home would drain, or even the petty reasons of why I do not want multifamily dwellings in my backyard, such as the construction of noise, the possibility of lowering the value of my property, and taking away the beauty of all the deer and wildlife that currently live on that land. However, since these issues have either been or will be discussed tonight, I wanted to focus on my personal reasons for not wanting parcel 22454001 to be split and the child parcel to be rezoned to RC. To preface all this, in just a couple of weeks, I will have been a resident at my home for one full year. In that time, I have gotten married, I've had a child, and I've grown to love this township. My wife and I had lived in an apartment for the last few years and prior to that, I had lived in the barracks for years during my time in the United States Marine Corps. When we decided to move, we wanted a place to call our own that would be beneficial for our future family in single, in a single-family home neighborhood. We'd always wanted to give the future, our children the best future in life possible, and we believe that to be in Oakhamas. We found our current home in May of last year. One of the largest selling points was its beautiful location among other single-family homes near downtown. We love that we are tucked away and cannot see or hear the bustle of Grand River. Rezoning this parcel would ruin the character and integrity of what is left of the single-family home areas inside of Oakhamas, especially this close to downtown. If the parcel owner desires to sell their land, they are absolutely free to do so. But as a resident directly next to this parcel on the west side, I believe rezoning this land would be a detriment to the township. This area deserves better than more apartments, townhomes, or condominiums. Meridian Township is a place for single-family homes and not more landlords. To end my statement, I would like to provide you with a quote from our township supervisor, Scott Hendrickson. After Niche recognized the CDPs of Oakhamas and Hazlet as the first and 31st ranked places to live in Michigan for 2024, Scott sent an article that Meridian Township posted on their website. Meridian Township residents and visitors know that we are a remarkable place to live, work, and raise a family. We offer exceptional schools, top-notch services, and great parks and natural features, which is why Meridian Township is truly a prime community. The land and trees behind my home and the single-family homes near me are why I decided to live where I live. Please do not designate this area as RC, as it does not represent what this area is and should be. Multifamily dwellings should be downtown and not in our backyards. Thank you for your mind, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, I have Christina Klock.
Hi, I'm Christina Klock and I reside at 4538 Seneca, which is also directly behind this property. And I'm here to oppose that. I agree with what everyone has already said. And you talked about the traffic study and the traffic impact. And I'm, I'm wondering if also it was studied, the amount of traffic that cuts through our neighborhood to avoid Dobie and Hamilton and Grand River. We get an enormous amount of traffic that cuts through either Shaker or Seneca to avoid all of the traffic. We are a community or a neighborhood without sidewalks with tons and tons of young families. And I will tell you, people go flying through there. As a nurse and a mom, I can tell you, I am terrified that, that someone is going to get hurt in that neighborhood. And we're going to be adding more traffic that will cut through there. I can tell you a quick story. Last Wednesday, I was going to a meeting at work, it was quarter to one, I saw this blue Jeep probably going 45 into 25. I thought, there we go again. So I pulled out, went to go down Shaker to turn down Dobie Road, and the car had got stopped by a school bus. Must have been a Wednesday that they had an early release. And so the car was obviously clearly frustrated, stopped behind the school bus. Not as soon as those red flashing lights were off, that car sped around the school bus to get onto Dobie. It is a block from, from the bus stop to Dobie Road. And they couldn't wait a block. So that is what I'm concerned about, is, is the, the traffic pattern, not just on Dobie, but that cuts through all of the neighborhoods that don't have sidewalks with families and , and children. The other issue that I wanted to talk about was one of the reasons that, we've lived in this community for 25 years. We love this community is because it's a community that values green space and the environment. And I don't know if any of you have seen that property, but the entire south side, yeah, south side, is this beautiful wooded lot with, with tons of wildlife. It's incredibly gorgeous. And as a community that valued, that I thought valued the environment, we're just going to tear that all down to build townhomes. And it, it just, it makes me feel like money is more important at the end of the day than our green spaces and our environment. And, and we're not even building a community of ownership. It's, it's, it's townhomes, it's rentals. We're, we're not encouraging young families to come and, and to build our community. It's, it's a, it's rentals. So, and not to mention the drainage. We are in a very low-lying area, you know, and the drainage impacted the runoff. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. And the last one I have is from David Klock.
I just want to say thank you for allowing me to speak at this planning commission. I live at 4538 Seneca. I'm west of the parcel. I just want to say I do not want the 4.28 acre parcel land located on Dobie Road north of Faith Lutheran rezoned from RAA single-family to RC multi, multiple-family with a maximum of 14 dwellings per unit. That would be like up to 60 units in my backyard. A lot of my fellow neighbors have said comments and they kind of took a lot of the words I was going to mention. I think one of the key things, I know there's a 50-yard buffer, but some of those trees back there are big trees. So 50 yards is like seven, or 50 feet's like 17 yards. So you get some big trees back there, there's not a lot of protection from noise, the lights, and people coming and going. And if you've gone on Seneca Drive, the back part of Seneca is a pretty wide street. Where we live, it's a narrow street. If you park one car on Seneca, you have to go, you have to stop and wait for incoming traffic to get around it. I have a dog, I walked 16 years, I see cars cutting through the neighborhood a lot. And as soon as traffic's backed up on Hamilton or Dobie, you can just see traffic cutting through our subdivision. So that's one thing, is that one thing I wanted to help prevent was having more traffic down our street. I did see that picture today for the first time. And my house is right to the west of that blue rectangle, which I think might be a retention pond or something. And I know our house is on the low end of the street, so is the water all going to be rushing towards our house, which is something I don't want. Someone mentioned like, you know, beautiful wildlife we see back there. There's deer, there's rabbits, owls, birds, squirrels. Not opposed to the units, I know there's, you know, a need to put more units, but I'm just thinking maybe there's better areas to put that than our backyard. I've been a resident for 28 years. Downtown Oakhamas, I know you've probably put a lot of time into that, but maybe that would be a better spot. I know malls aren't what they used to be, so maybe some of the mall property might be another option for development. I haven't done any, much research into that, but other than that, I think they took a lot of the words I was saying, so thank you for the time.
Thank you very much. Next, I have Ceci, I'm sorry, Cecilia, or is it Cecilia Kramer?
Cecilia.
Cecilia, thank you, I should know that.
Yes, good evening. My name's Cecilia Kramer, and I live at 4560 Oakwood, which is in, over in Forest Hills. But I'm here tonight representing Faith Lutheran. I just wanted to clear up a couple of issues that were brought up about the church and church property. And I think John McCracken will be talking, maybe more historic stuff. But right now, our plans are to have two driveways for the, for the church. We will be moving the northernmost driveway. There is not going to be any less access to the Faith Lutheran Church for either the parishioners or for the three precincts that vote there, precincts seven, eight, and nine. We will continue to provide that, that service for the, for the community, for the township with regard to the polling locations. But, so I just wanted to say that we had, there was some misconception there that we would be eliminating our driveway, and that is not true. Thank you.
Thank you. And next up is John McCracken.
Hi, I'm John McCracken. I reside at 71 East Newman Road in Williamstown Township. I am a member of Faith Lutheran Church, have been a member for 35 years. And I was the president of the church council back in 2018 when we decided to try and sell the north piece of our property. I can tell you from working on trying to sell it for that period of time, that the only interest we've had from people has been from builders who are interested in building multifamily units. The few people we've had talk about putting in private homes realize how awkward it would be to position them on that property and how much it would cost and have, and pulled away. I mean, you know, there were never offers. But beyond that, I would encourage you to actually go look at the green space. That is not green space, that is a scrub. There are as many dead trees back in there as there are live trees. It's true, there's a lot of wildlife. The land's very uneven, it's impossible to know what'll happen to the drainage until that's studied and plans are put forward by engineers. But it's, you know, most often, we've had cleanup days at church and pulled lots of dumped electronics and stuff out of that field back there because it's just a prime place for dumping. And, but I don't see anything else the land could be used for, to be honest.
Thank you. I do not have any other green sheets, so at this point... Let's hold off and see what the commissioners have questions, and if they have questions, I'll ask you to come up and help answer them. Thanks. Any commissioners have any follow-up questions or thoughts that you'd like to discuss at this point? Okay.
Can we rehash, so what are we doing on this topic this evening, since we just...
Is this still a public hearing? So we can take a stropole and you don't have to have an opinion at the stropole. You can say you're not ready to make a decision, or you don't have a, a solid direction yet, if you'd like. But if you have questions or things that you'd like to clarify, and I'll let staff answer if there's anything else you'd like from us tonight.
No, that's what we're looking for tonight. In the long run, as I described, this is multifamily residential, this would be followed up by a special use permit. It is worth noting that if the total square footage of the buildings are, is over 25,000 square feet, that special use permit would also go to the Board of Trustees for their approval as well. Then that would be followed up by site plan approval, which is administrative in nature. So there are several steps to this process, but what you're being asked for tonight is some direction to staff, your typical stropole vote, which is non-binding in every sense of the word.
On the rezoning question?
On the rezoning request.
Right, yes.
I do have a follow-up question.
Go ahead. Commissioner Blumer, please, go ahead.
Mr. Fiedler.
We don't take questions from the audience. If you'd like to give public comment, you're welcome to fill out a form and give public comment.
Have you had any architectural concept drawings about what the exterior of the buildings would look like?
No, it's, we're in the preliminary stages. We have floor plans, but developed some floor plans of what our intent is and, but don't have any architectural drawings as of yet, which, again, the, the township planning department typically has gone as far as telling us textures and colors and those kinds of things. So we're accustomed to working with them on those kinds of issues. And if I could just make a comment regarding drainage, all, Ingham County Drain Commission, we have detention ponds for the whole site, for roof runoff, for street runoff. All of the water runs to, to a, to a, the detention pond. All the water runs to the detention pond. And then, then there is a planned relief. The, the water sits in the detention pond until it rises to a certain, and then it runs out to the street, to the stormwater that's out on Dobie Road. So there's an extensive drain system that will be required for us to follow, and it all gets followed and approved by the drain office. So if there's a discussion regarding flooding, that flooding will not come from this property, will not come from this property.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Skills?
Thank you. What's the price range for these apartments that you're thinking about?
They're probably, for, per monthly, you're asking?
Yes.
Yeah. They're probably going to run from $2,400 to $3,000 a month, depending on exactly what the layout is.
So that's not going to be affordable housing. That's not going to be affordable housing.
But definitely because of the hospitals and such and the university, it's very much needed. And they're coming from where they're coming from, and that's what they want. So we're definitely fulfilling a need.
Mr. Scherke.
Yes?
Do we have any flexibility in limiting the amount at this point? Or do we have to stand back and let the process unfold? Say, if we, if we came to some type of agreement of no more than 40, or something of that nature?
Michigan planning law does not allow the planning commission nor the board to mandate a condition. If a condition is offered by the applicant, that is permissible and then would be attached to the rezoning.
I should have asked my question that way. Thank you.
We do have one additional person who would like to give public comment. Wayne, and I'm not going to pronounce your last name properly, but...
Paul Bar.
Paul Bar, thank you.
4554 Seneca, bought the house in 1979. As I heard talking about 35 units, the last meeting when it was rejected, one of the board members said, "We made a mistake with putting those apartments in that are there now." The board member said, "We made a mistake, they did not count on the traffic." And as, I'm sorry, said that, when you see, when they had Dobie Road blocked off, everybody cut through our neighborhood. I'm not talking three, four car, I'm talking eight, nine cars stopped waiting for somebody to make a right or a left and then go out through Shaker Heights, and that's what they do. The other thing is, if it's 35 units, he said they're two to, three to four bedroom homes. Every family I know today, the wife and the husband have a car. They're 70. If they use 40 units, now 80. Not counting people, especially students, are gonna rent, and now you've tripled that amount. That what, that's what concerns me, and a good point was brought. I don't wanna see anybody get hurt, or worse yet, die, because we made a mistake, and when I say "we," I'm part of the community. You make the decision, not me. But when you realize, the board, when they put, and I don't, can't tell you the year at my age, I have a hard time remembering what day it is, but the thing is, please don't make that same mistake. The church can go and donate, they, I don't know, they probably don't pay taxes on the property to begin with, I'm not sure how this works for a church. But it's something that, if the township bought it, and this, I thought of something, you wanna do things for the community. Why not the township buy that? All those apartments have families with kids in it. Make a park for them, give them a life, a better life. That's what the township could do, and I don't think you would hear anybody kick if you raised my taxes. I know I wouldn't. If you raise them, and you'd never hear me come to a meeting complaining.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
That's all I have to say. Please give it strong, strong consideration. This is not the right thing to do. Let's not make the mistake twice. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Can I make a point of order? I think we should probably close the public comment portion during our discussion period.
It's still, I think, technically part of the public hearing on this, on this item, but yes, we are done with public comment, I don't have any more green sheets, so let's move on to board member, commissioner discussion. Commissioner Skiles?
No, I'm, I'm just thinking about what he's saying. Shouldn't we close the public hearing first and then have a board member comment?
Let's do that, okay. Close the public hearing at 8:02, 8:03, sorry. Thank you.
Sorry if I used the wrong language.
No, you're, you're right. This is where I get a little, I think sometimes we've done discussion and calling it part of the public hearing, but let's go ahead and do discussion now, if there is any further. Go ahead, Commissioner Blumer.
Let me start off by saying that, as Commissioner Skiles said at the beginning of this discussion, I have great respect for the Fiedler builders. I have seen their work, I've had them do work for me. They do excellent work. But I'm very uncomfortable with this concept here. It is, appears to be completely inconsistent with the surrounding neighborhood, both in density and in land use planning. And I understand that there is a need for sophisticated rental housing, because we have a number of doctors moving in, and physicists for the MSU lab facilities, but that doesn't change the fact that this is a long-established neighborhood of single-family dwellings, and this is a radical change from what is, what these people have bought their houses to, to be surrounded by. And I'm uncomfortable, not, not because I don't trust the Fiedlers, they do excellent work, that's not the issue that I see here. The issue I see here is that this change will, will seriously disrupt the nature of the existing neighborhood.
Thank you. Any other comments? Go ahead.
I got maybe four, try to hit them in order. My view of the rezoning is that it is consistent with our newly revised master plan, so as a matter of policy, I believe we would need a compelling reason not to approve the rezoning, and that's always a challenge to do when the process has these distinct parts, because we don't get to know what might actually get there, other than some ideas about what might fit, but we don't know that much about it. So we're constrained here to a policy decision of, should we make the zoning of this parcel in conformance now with our new master plan? And one potentially compelling reason not to do that is the compatibility of multifamily housing on this site. And I can see the logic of inconsistency, as my fellow commissioner stated it, with single-family on one side. I also understand the applicant's position that there's multifamily on another side and right nearby, so if you're standing on Dobie Road, it looks consistent with the area, if you're standing on Seneca, it looks inconsistent. So for me, it's a matter of where the, where the edge is moving to. On the issue of whether or not we should have more multifamily housing in the township, I always like to remind that about half of our residents in the township now live in multifamily housing. So it is functionally half of who we are as a community. And there's clearly a demand for more. One could say, where should the more be, and the notion that higher-density housing should be downtown, to me means, should be places where people can easily get to amenities. And it's hard for me to imagine a place in our township that is more accessible by bus, foot, and bike to convenience stores, to restaurants, to grocery stores, to the Meridian Mall than this one. So from a walkability, bikeability, public transit standpoint, in my view, it sits exactly where it, it should. On the issue of public amenities like parks, the township has, over the last 17 years I've lived in the area, in Tacoma Hills, made major improvements on the park that runs between Hamilton and Edward School, and connecting that then down to the Dobie Reserve. So from the standpoint of access to recreational facilities, it's a, it's a great spot in my mind. For those reasons, I'm supportive of the rezoning application. Thank you.
Anyone else here to share thoughts at this point?
Not sure.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Skiles.
I've listened to this quite a bit. I know the area very well. I've attended the church. I've looked at the lands back behind there, and I do agree with the member there from the church about the 50% of the trees are dead. I'm cognitive and conscious of Seneca's concerns there. But I also agree that this is, this meets our bill for walkability. This is something that we have helped develop, the changes to our master plan when we updated, we had this information going forward, and so my position is, I don't wanna stop it at this very second. I want to continue to hear more, I want to let this unfold a little bit so that we can get a better picture of what we're looking at. We have this need for housing, there is no if, ands, buts about it. I was making lots of notes here, I'm not gonna bore you with all of my notes, but the main point is, as we were developing the master plan, we were getting this influx of information about this, and we, we took it into consideration in the master plan. Now the master plan is here, and we're trying to make the property consistent with the master plan, but we're trying to shy away from it at the same time. So I'm, in the straw poll, I am gonna support this to move it forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Skiles, that's very helpful, and I, I think that is important to note that, that this is one step of many in a process, and that, that a straw poll vote tonight in support, and even a vote in support by the planning commission at a future meeting, does not mean that this project moves forward, there's still a number of steps that would have to take place before then, but I, I appreciate what you're saying about conformity with the master plan as revised recently, and, and that really resonates that, that this is something that we gave a lot of consideration to as we were working on, updating of the master plan, so. And I will be voting in support in the, in the straw poll, and look forward to hearing more. Are we ready to do a straw poll?
I would like to add.
Please, yes, thank you.
So on page 18 of the master plan, one of the goals and objectives that we have listed, it's bullet point number two, amend the zoning ordinance to allow for an increase in missing middle housing developments such as duplex units. And something I am continually disheartened by is that what we are being presented with does nothing to address the need for missing middle housing. In my straw poll vote, I will not be supporting this special use permit application, and that is the reason why.
Thank you. Go ahead, Commissioner Brooks.
I'm really in the middle on this one. I'm, I'm partly surprised by, well, I'm, I'm not sure what I think about this, 'cause it seems very similar to what we talked about with the Park Lake development, that was this mix, this multifamily residential area that was like, gonna be laid out in this fashion, and, and there was a lot of conversation about drainage and runoff and all this stuff. And when I look at this parcel, I'm, I am concerned about the properties on the west side of it. However, I'm also, think about the urban service boundary and why we're trying to increase development in that space, and so this may meet that need. However, I also am conscious that there's already lots of places for high-income individuals in the township, and they can go to many other places, and so this could be a potential opportunity for actual middle-income development. However, I also wanna recognize what was commented, that the, getting mid-level housing development done currently is just extremely difficult from all the reports that we're reading. And so I'm like, do we hold off on this and just wait? Because we don't have very many parcels that can be developed, and so maybe just waiting is better than moving forward with more high-end. Not that that's guaranteed, by the way, that, that we are going to get what we see in this. This is just a first step, right? We don't know what's gonna happen downstream from this. Then my last comment is, I am curious about, Mr. Sherkley, I don't know if you know the, what the decisions were in 2019, well, you weren't here back then, or you, so I'm curious what their decision-making process was and why they denied this, and what is different now in relation to that?
Since you asked, what's different is the master plan designation, calling most of the site future, you know, multifamily residential. If you want more specific than that, I'd have to go back and look at the record.
So those are my, those are my comments.
Thank you. So, just from the comments that I've heard, it sounds like our straw poll is not going to be giving you very clear direction.
Aye.
It might.
It might, but.
So, I have an idea then, 'cause I was listening to the same conversation, and I kinda feel the same way, you got a three, I'm hearing sort of a three-three thing right now. Typically, I would take direction, I would present you at your next meeting with a resolution stating what you seem to indicate. At your next meeting, I'll present you with both, a resolution to recommend, remember, this is a recommendation, 'cause this is a rezoning. A recommendation of approval and a recommendation of denial. I'll let, you know, in the meantime, this is why we don't make decisions on the night of the planning, of the public hearing, and we'll just take it up from there. In the meantime, if there's more, if there's something other than, you know, what did it look like in 2019, get some more specifics on that. If there's anything else you want me to look into, let me know.
Go ahead, Commissioner Skiles.
I recommend we first take the straw poll, and then we decide on what type of resolution we want.
That sounds great.
Okay.
I agree with what he said.
Straw poll, all those inclined to vote in support of this proposal?
Aye.
And those likely to not support this proposal? And those still undecided? Okay. I, I think the direction you suggest is good. I would ask fellow commissioners if you have questions for staff or information that you would like to make sure is brought forward, either raise it right now or share it with staff between now and the next week, so that they, so that Brian can come prepared to, to provide the information or ask for it of those who have it. Go ahead, Commissioner.
I, I have a question. I don't know if you can get this data or not, 'cause I feel like it's a bit subjective, but if there's any way to get a handle on, what is the number of projects, let's say, in the last year that have been approved that cater to the demographic of, 'cause we, we do frequently hear about, like, the hospitals that are being built and the, the different things that are happening on campus that are bringing higher-income people to the area, approximately, like, a number of developments that have, that cater to that type of demographic? Again, I know it's subjective, so I don't know how much of that data you can get, but I'm very curious about that.
Can you be a little bit more spec, what, what's your?
So about.
Are you looking for?
Projects where they are multifamily rental units in the range above $2,000.
Professional ref, prof, okay, okay.
Thank you. Commissioner Skiles, did you have something else also?
No, I'm good. I'm good.
Can I make one further comment?
Please, yes. Go ahead.
I've been looking at this, this picture map that was given to us, and as I stated before, my principal discomfort with this project plan is that it, it completely changes the nature of the, especially the west side, but a little bit to the east side as well, of the existing community. In looking at this, if the westernmost block in this picture wasn't there and instead was converted to a, an attractive.
Buffer.
Buffer, I would be very much more inclined to support this, because it would, it would insulate the people with existing houses from the, you know, the block, and it would also cut back on traffic, which is a secondary concern that these people have, and I think it's a legitimate concern. So just to express my opinion, I'm not completely against the idea, but I'm against the idea where it overwhelms the neighborhood that's next to it.
Thank you for that. Thank you for that comment. Commissioner Scales, please.
What you just said is why I don't want to just shoot the thing down at this point. If we have some time to discuss our fears with the project, maybe with the developer present.
Sure.
And understanding how the law works, you especially being a lawyer, understanding how the law works, we might get some revisions brought back to us that are more palatable to the residents that are, are disproportionately affected by this.
I'd like to piggy, if you're done, piggyback on what you said. I've seen other people looking to develop pieces of property who have taken the time to have conversations with the folks who are in adjacent properties and have concerns. And I've seen some really creative solutions come, you know, come out of those discussions. And so I would encourage, although we cannot require you to do that, it would be really encouraging to have heard that you, those conversations may have taken place or that you heard the concerns that were raised and can kind of help alleviate some of those, either through a solution where there might be a, a change in the design. I, I've seen some things done that I think have been really helpful. And then it starts off a relationship that is much more positive going forward. So just something to think about, um, and, and hope that if that were the case, that you were willing to have those conversations, that the residents would be willing to do that as well. Yes, please go.
You know, I would venture to guess there's a church nearby where everybody could sit down and talk.
Don't do that while I take a drink, yeah. So anyway, just, just something to think about, Commissioner Brooks. And, and I just also, not that I'm pushing, but we do have three more things of unfinished business on our agenda. So I want to be cognizant of our, our time and everyone else's.
So, Mr. Shortkey, I just had two requests for some more information, if, if you have time. One is the, knowing why we made the decision in 2019, why this body made that decision. And then the second one is, I know that we've talked about this specific piece of property a number of times over the past year and a half, it feels like.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I am having trouble remembering what those decisions were and if they're relevant to this specific discussion. But I feel like they might be.
Decisions in the last year and a half?
Yeah, didn't we, did we make any like rezone, rezoning or changes to this property at all?
You changed the, the future land use designation from institutional to multifamily residential with the 2023 master plan update for approximately three quarters of the subject property.
Okay, and that was.
And then that was ultimately approved by the township board.
Right, okay. So I thought there was discussion around that that might be relevant to this? Because I thought that we talked about like the different housing developments that would go on it or some, something like that. Does anyone else remember something about that?
I do.
And so I'm curious if you could look, not that I'm asking you to watch all the videos because that would be.
No, that won't happen, but I will research.
I'm just, I'm, I just have some recollection of that that I feel like would be relevant to this conversation.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, maybe at least the date. I'm, I'm skimming for that. I don't know if it's, maybe it's in here, the date of that meeting or those meetings.
Okay. If there is no other public comment, let's move on to number eight, unfinished business. First up is eight A, special land use permit number two four zero zero seven, Liliac LLC at five six eight one Shaw.
Uh, you've heard this before. You had a special, you had the public hearing on the, for this on, uh, May, May thirteenth. This is an existing structure on Shaw Street. It formerly housed, uh, I think dental offices. Uh, the applicant is looking to turn it into a four-unit residential building. That is a special use permit in the RN district to which it was rezoned last year. He's not expanding the building, uh, so you'll have to, he's in the conversation with the road department, but those are site plan issues and the applicant is here. So at your direction, there is a, uh, resolution to approve in here. This is your approval. This will not go to the board. And the applicant is here if you have any questions.
Thank you. Anyone have questions? Or do you want to hear from the applicant?
Would it be out of order to move, uh, adoption of the resolution at this point?
It would not be.
I so move.
Okay.
I support.
Okay. We have lots of support, a lot of support by Commissioner McConnell. And I heard you first, Commissioner Scales, so you're going to be the second.
That's no fair. He's closer to you.
You'll get the next one.
And I tried to miss this last time when I wasn't supposed to. So really, I was first.
All right. So given that, um, any further discussion on this, on this special use permit? Hearing none, let's call for a vote. Uh, Commissioner McConnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks.
Yes.
Commissioner Scales.
Yes.
Commissioner Blumer.
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder.
Yes.
And the chair votes, yes. So this is approved. It will go forward to the township board for its consideration. Oh, this is ours. I'm sorry, special use permit is us. I'm sorry. Thank you. So we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you sitting through our meeting for this. All right. Thank you. I, I will get this. I.
That's the old step.
Our, our next, uh, special use permit is number two four zero zero eight, Redmore Montessori at twenty seven forty five Mount Hope. And this is a special use permit to approve this request.
Right. As, as I said, uh, before, you did have a public hearing on May thirteenth. This is for an expansion of the parking lot at the Redmore Montessori School. It's not affecting the school itself and it's not affecting the wetlands. This is on the opposite side of the property. So at your direction, there is a recommendation to approve.
Thank you. Commissioner Scales?
If we don't have to read the entire resolution, I move the resolution to approve for, uh, special use permit number two four zero zero H.
Thank you. Commissioner Scales, is there a second?
Oh, I second.
Any further discussion on this one? All right, then I will take the roll. Uh, Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Blumer?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yep.
And the chair votes, yes. Mission is approved. Thank you. Okay, now.
They are, they'll proceed to site plan approval now.
Okay, perfect. And now we are at special use permit number two four zero zero nine for sands at thirty five twenty Oakmoss Road. And this is one that we recommend and that will go to the township board.
Correct.
If, if it is, well, either way, it'll go to the township board, um, our recommendation.
Um, you had a public hearing on this on May thirteenth. You've heard a lot of comment on it. You had a lot of communication in your packet about it. Uh, you did direct staff to create a, uh, resolution of approval that is in your packet. And the applicant is here if you have any more questions.
Okay. Anybody want to hear more from the applicant or would someone like to entertain a motion? I will entertain a motion if someone would like to move. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Scales, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Commissioner Blumer. Any discussion? Okay, then I will call the roll. Uh, Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner Blumer?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Brooks?
Yes.
Commissioner McConnell?
Yes.
And the chair votes, yes. So that one will move forward to the township board for consideration. Thank you. Now we are at item nine, other big news, uh, zoning board of appeals appointment.
Uh, yes. Uh, so with the, with Commissioner McCutcheon's appointment to the township board, the planning commission lays onto the zoning board of appeals is now vacant. And they have, uh, an agenda coming up.
Wait, who? Not very good timing. Sorry.
I'm sorry. Which board did he?
The zoning board of appeals.
Oh, okay.
And they meet at what time?
So here, well.
ZBA is the fun one. I can barely fit this in.
Let me show you, just to give you an idea, what they're looking at. Zoning board appeals, agendas. If it's up, oh, May thir- uh, actually, we're not close yet. We're not close enough. But the last, so they're not, we're not close enough that the packet and the agenda for the next meeting, because that would be, let's see, today's the tenth, eleven, twelve, twelve and seven is nineteenth, so nineteenth. The last agenda.
That's why you're the planner, right?
Yeah. If I could do math better, I'd be an engineer. Um, this was, this was, this is the typical, um, they had a, a request last month for a, a couple sign variances. Uh, they wanted a bigger sign than, uh, than required on one wall. And then they wanted a second wall sign. And that's, that's typical, the kind of thing they hear. Uh, fence, you heard this, they're going to hear three requests from Consumers Energy on what you saw tonight. Uh, front setback variance, a rear setback variance, and fence height. Uh, those are the kinds of things that you hear. Um, just to give you an example.
And how often do they meet? Did you say?
They meet monthly. If there's no agenda items, they will, they will get canceled. Um, March was a little bit busier. Um, this was, you see some people, some people in the Lake District especially, but not always. Um, they want to create parcels that are undersized, uh, those kinds of things. Um, side yard setback on a deck, um, those things. Uh, new patio out area for outdoor seating, reducing number of parking spots. That was for pins and pints. Uh, they did get that variance there in site plan approval, site plan review process. Anyway, just to give you an idea of the kind of things that they deal with.
And so they, do they have a typical meeting date and time?
Third Wednesday of the month.
Commissioner Brooks is thinking about this.
Is he?
Here.
You, you were.
A second devotion.
I was going to say, was that a nomination? Do we have to vote on this or can we?
Planning commission experience.
Uh, it is a vote of the planning commission, yes, yes.
All right. Wait, what are we voting on? Designee to the zoning appeals.
Application deadlines, I think. Yeah, here we go. Um. Complete application. So the, you see the, the meeting dates.
Also having a baby.
I think they're at six o'clock, but Keith Chapman is the staff for the zoning board of appeals. And incidentally, my math was right, June nineteenth is his next meeting.
Hmm, okay. Um, so how soon? This is coming up pretty quickly that you have an actual meeting with an agenda on June nineteenth? Okay. So you need someone, um.
Yeah, see, we haven't even updated the website yet.
But I don't, I, I, I'm interested, um. I wish there was a way to like, pho- pho- it should be like, phone a, phone your wife and be like.
You did what?
But I don't, but Commissioner Snyder, did you, you also asked a question about it, so I don't know if you were interested in it.
I am interested. It's the same problem as you though. Like, it is very challenging for me sometimes just to maintain what is required of me for this body. I, I know, like, one of the things I'm working on as a human, and I've gotten a lot better at this, is tempering my ambition appropriately and not taking on more than I or my family can handle. And we are at our limit right now, so.
Is, is there a way, I appreciate it and I am interested, I am curious if there's a way to, so I'm also doing the CIA at the moment. And that meets once a month.
Mm-hmm.
And however, the, but the ZBA seems like that's a voting position?
It is.
Yeah.
It's, it's a, it's described as a quasi judicial body. Like appeals to ZBA decisions go to the circuit court of appeals.
Oh.
Yeah. Now, not to put pressure on. Um, I've, I've, in other communities, been on ZBA's, I've never s- you know, staffing ZBA's, being on ZBA's, I've never seen that happen. I've heard of it, of course, but.
Your decisions, your decision tree is very clear. It's very crisp. It's like five components that you walk through before you make a decision. And if it doesn't hit all of them, you say no.
That's good to know.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Is this the thing that could be shared between, or does it have to be one?
No, you need a.
Okay.
Can I make a suggestion? Can we adjourn this or delay this decision and, and let Commissioner Brooks attend a meeting and see if it's something that you think would be further interesting?
Though that we have to have someone on, on board at the, at its next meeting, which is June nineteenth. So I don't know that we have the luxury of waiting. We need someone. So if you would.
All right, I'll.
Be willing to do it. If it becomes too much, know that I could take it for a couple of months and then I could decide it's too much for me and we could have someone. I, I know we can't continue to do that to you. That probably creates a lot of problems, but.
How about we think about this? If he's willing to take it on till we get the next person on this board, and it be theirs.
Or you may decide that you like it a lot and that they can have the CIA.
Turns out it's worth wants to get rid of him another night a week.
Let, let's, let's promise that if, if, if you're willing to take it temporarily on SPAC and you're available June nineteenth to attend the ZBA meeting.
I, I am. I looked at my calendar, so it's all right.
And, and if you ever come to a point where you feel that you need to step back, know that you have the support of your fellow commissioners and that one of us will.
Thank you.
Not make you continue to do this if you don't.
Well, yeah. There's some jokes built into that too, you know.
Well, thank you for the nomination.
All right. So, um, if we need a formal vote on that, let's say, do we need to do a roll call or can we do a boys' vote?
There's not going to be.
It's just appointment.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's just.
Okay. All in favor of Commissioner Brooks being our designee to the ZBA, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Commissioner Brooks's wife runs in the dark going, no.
I'm sure she's watching live.
Yeah, she's probably watching live, having the live.
Thank you very much for stepping up and truly, if it, if, if you want to revisit this at any point in the future, just, we'll talk a lot of then. Thank you. But we do appreciate you.
Thank you for your confidence.
Representing us. Thank you. All right, reports and announcements, township board updates.
I have nothing at this time, at this time.
Besides the fact that they keep poaching our commissioner.
I mean, yes, yes.
Off of that.
Mr. Smith is a board member, we noted that. I, I haven't had any other discussions with, with Manager Schmidt at this time, so I have, I don't, I don't have any other report.
Okay. Thank you very much. And then liaison reports, if anyone has them.
One item from the environmental commission, which I mentioned before, has been considering applications for, uh, grant funding related to the implementation of our climate sustainability plan. Several of those, uh, projects are moving forward. One of them is still being kicked around the environmental commission with, uh, unusual public comment at one of our meetings. And that's a, a notion of green burial, um, which we obviously have in our master plan. So as a policy, it's, um, township policy to look forward on it. The feeling is that the proposal was to have a feasibility study done for a section of a township-owned, operated, managed facility. And, um, that is, has been seen by the environmental commission as, uh, maybe a bit more dialogue should happen before we get into the stage of hiring a consultant to look at a specific piece of property. But it is in a sense a land use, uh, change, so it may be worth the planning commission keeping, keeping a track of it. And I'm happy to provide more details that are in the environmental commission discussion.
Thank you. I saw that somewhere and I'm trying to remember where it was that it's, uh, I read something about it. Not remembering where now.
I learned a new word, columbarium. It's, uh, the pictures I've seen are, well, it's, it's stacks of pre-mated remains. That's, um, you see in many urban areas where land is limited. And as we expand, that's one of the things that they're thinking about maybe doing. So, um, uh, this is one piece that will fit into a broader thought about what's the future of our township-owned, um, properties.
Thank you. Anybody else? Commissioner Scales?
The EDC did not meet, but, uh, one thing that's coming out of the EDC is that, uh, Juneteenth over Lake Lansing will be held a Saturday on the fifteenth from one PM to seven PM at Lake Lansing Park South. And you'll be able. Lansing Park South, and you'll be able to enjoy a day of live music, games, and more. So come out and enjoy and celebrate. Food?
Food?
Is there going to be food?
There will be food.
There will be food trucks, I believe, yes.
Am I right?
Food trucks?
Oh, I don't know. I'm not involved with Juneteenth. I believe so, but
Let's see.
I can't get it.
Yeah, there's got to be something. Well, there's restaurants nearby, walking distance, there may be food trucks, I'm not sure.
But it says on the website, there's going to be fire breathers there, so bring your own skewers of food, and ask them to help you out.
It will be a fun, enjoyable time.
Sure.
Yes.
Any other liaison updates?
The CIA meeting got canceled last time, so we didn't have a meeting.
Anybody else? Good, thank you. Project updates, I see you have a report in our packet, anything to add to that, or any questions on that?
Well, looking at it, major oversight, and I apologize for this, we have left off Grand Reserve, that is an under construction project, and the reason I got thinking about it was Commissioner Snyder's request to look into that missing middle housing. That's 60 duplexes that are being built there. So I'll add that to your next list. Looking ahead to new applications, you do have two new, two public hearings coming up on your next meeting, so just bringing those to your attention. Also, related to that, I guess, since we brought up Juneteenth, we're two, two months to the date out from second annual Meridian Township Pride Day, which will take place five to 10 right after the farmer's market.
Are we doing the race again this year?
No.
Are we doing fireworks?
Not for pride.
And that's in August?
Celebrate, yeah, August 10th.
Right on the 4th of July, are we doing fireworks?
I believe so, I can get that information for you.
Okay, and do we have a grand opening date for Trader Joe's?
Not yet. I specifically have been asking, I have not heard of a date yet.
I don't know what we're going to talk about after that's finished.
Get in line now.
Yeah, so go stand there with your tent, and I personally don't think I'm going to try to even go for the first two months, because I know how crazy it will be, so go after the crowds die down a bit. And then, project updates were done, we are at item 12, public remarks. Is there anyone here who would like to give public remarks on any topic? Seeing no one, we are now at commissioner comments. Commissioner McConnell?
I want, just a quick comment on the project report, which I love, and I love that we're now getting the, the new ones bolted, it makes it easier to find them, and at some point, it might be fun to do the 30,000-foot flyover so folks can see where the bits and pieces are, Copper Creek I had to go looking for because the first phases were past me, but we'll, we'll see that in
Oh, you mean a map?
Yeah, we could, we could get onto Google Earth and fly around, we don't need to do it tonight because we've been here for a long time.
Oh, okay, I see.
But I was also thinking back to Commissioner Snyder's comment about the price points of the multifamily that we're building, it looks like we've got three multifamily projects under site plan review, and several under construction, and that table might be one where you could just slide another column in there that said, this is what those units we believe are, what the price point was, whether they're above or below, or if there's another way to handle that information.
It is often mentioned, you know, by the developer.
Since we're already tracking those projects under.
If I have that information available, I can provide it. It's not, like, required information for an application.
Correct, correct. It typically comes up during a public hearing when we're asking these questions about, like, market are you targeting? So to, to the degree that those, that information can be gleaned, this might be one place to start, that was my
Yeah, thank you for that.
Any other commissioner comments? Commissioner Brooks?
Yeah, my only one is from our time this evening during the public hearing process. It was, I think we should have, like, I saw the boards, I watched a board meeting a couple weeks ago, and they had public hearings, and then they would sort of close the public portion prior to our conversation, which would be helpful to have in those notes, Brian, that you put together, just so then it's like, do this thing.
Thank you for that, because I, we don't these frequently but infrequently, and I think I may have babbled that, and you're right, that we shouldn't have our comments interspersed with public comment, because then it does feel more like back and forth dialogue, which is not our intent. And so I, I think that might be on me, but I would appreciate kind of the cheat sheet of, like
Make sure that's clarified.
And maybe, you and I maybe can talk, just to make sure that I'm got what I need, like, for the next meeting, because I know we've got a couple of public hearings on that one, too. I'll just make sure that I'm ready to go, and, but thank you for
Is there something specific that, are we missing something?
I think it's on there, though, it says
Very clear guidance to you.
Discussion.
Yeah, but it doesn't say close the public hearing, and that's where I, like, we should have moved from part, I wasn't sure, because I thought that we kept the public hearing open until we got done with the topic, even though we got done with the public comment portion of the public hearing, and so it might just be a formality of, like, what words I use when, so
Sure, sure.
Thank you for bringing that up, and I will try to make that more clean, and there are a couple of other things, too, I think, just that scripting of beyond just the format that the board doesn't engage in dialogue, you know, the commissioner
Okay.
Answer question.
Okay.
Because I don't want people to think that we're ignoring what they said, I think that people made some really good points, people also made some points that may not have been accurate, and I think either way, we don't generally engage, we might try to clarify if we have to, or help people understand the issue better, but, but I think if I had to script, just like today, I ran literally direct from work, I'm, I'm no dinner brain, and I'm, so anyway, yeah, that would be really helpful.
Do you want something specifically, like, when I send you the agenda early, say, hey, how does this look, do you want
That could be really helpful if you wouldn't mind, I don't want to put a lot of, I know you guys are also very short-staffed, so I don't want to put a lot of work on you, let, maybe let's
Well, I don't want you, I don't, I mean, it's nice, I'm not trying to insult your intelligence, you know, when I do that, but maybe I, you know, say, hey, just a reminder, we have some, this agenda includes two public hearings, so close the, you know, here's some bullet points to remember.
That would be really appreciated, if you don't find that to be too much, that would be very helpful.
Oh, no, no, I'm happy.
Okay, great, thank you, appreciate it. Anything else?
How about a script that you read just before a public hearing?
Oh, I would love that, like, we do that for, we do that for people that I work with who chair meetings, they get us, but that's, like, I don't, again, I, I don't
Ron Snaker used to do that before board meetings, he'd just read the little script, tell everybody, this is how it's going to go.
Yeah, that, that would be awesome.
Okay.
And it probably can be generically applied across other, you know, it's not, not something, you can laminate it and just put it in front of me every meeting, and I'll be fine, but thank you very much.
Sure, sure.
Cool. Anything else that anyone would like to bring up? Okay, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Commissioner Blumer?
Teach you.
Commissioner Scales, would you like to second? Blumer?
No.
Would you like to second that motion?
I would love to second.
Okay, all in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned at 9:40, or 8:48, I'm sorry, let's not make it longer than it is.